October 17th, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. We have an addendum to the agenda. We need to amend the agenda to add item eight to new business. Consideration of purchase of a 2023 Chevy Tahoe from Todd Wenzel Chevrolet, allowing action by council on this additional item. Is there a motion? I'll second. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman. Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Public hearings. Public hearing for establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for 141 Washington Street. A request has been received from 141 Washington Street LLC to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 141 Washington Street pursuant to Public Act 146 of 2000 to facilitate the rehabilitation of this property. The affected property owner has received formal written notice of the public hearing and the public hearing will be provided, public will be provided with an opportunity to comment. Action is anticipated at the conclusion of this meeting hearing. However, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later in the evening. Are there any council members who would like to come forward for comment? Or I'm sorry, members of the public. Sorry. I was ahead of myself.
Good evening. Mark Miller, 400 River Street, representing the Downtown Development Authority and the Chamber of Commerce would just like to reiterate our support for this project and for the benefits that it will will achieve for the community. It will be a redevelopment-ready community site that will be redeveloped, provide 15 long-term housing units as well as commercial space, and put a blighted, empty building into into useful, useful gain again. Hopefully be able to pay taxes in the long run at a productive, productive clip. So just want to ask for your support in both the certificate and the district, and we appreciate your yes vote.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Mick Schmansky, 332 Fifth Street. I also would like to show my support for this project. As you know, housing has been a major issue and still is for our city. In addition to blight, so granting the the Oprah and the certificate does those two things. But it also encourages other investments, letting people know that we are a community that is ready to accept our, our skin in the game, so to speak, to get projects up off the ground and, and make progress for our city. And then lastly, I think this is such a great opportunity to again build a north side downtown with Washington Street. I remember that as a kid when there were businesses all the way down Washington Street from the Hotel Northern, almost all the way to the bridge, and I would like to see that again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Tracy Davis, 251 Seventh Street, and I'm with Housing North, and I too would like to support this project. I have worked on some of the details with this project, and as you heard earlier, Mick talk about when he grew up remembering the businesses. I, I too, when I grew up, actually worked in one of the businesses there. I'd love to see that space being utilized, the revitalization, so hope that you can support that and consider both the Oprah and the incentives. And as you had heard, we have, over and over, you've heard about the need for housing, needing 1,902 new units. This would help us again eat away at that, that number of new units. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else? No further comments. This public hearing is now closed. Public hearing for obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate application from 141 Washington LLC. An application has been received from 141 Washington LLC for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property at 141 Washington Street pursuant to Public Act 146 of 2000. No action is anticipated at this conclusion of the public hearing. However, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later in the evening. Are there any members of the public who would like to come forward for comment? Okay, seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. Public hearing for Michigan Community Development Block Grant, CD BG, funding for CBGB Housing Improving Local Viability CHIL. Purpose of this hearing is to seek community input regarding funding from CBGB Housing Improving Local Viability CHIL, the grant that the city will be seeking to assist with homeowner improvement activity for those homeowners that qualify. The required notices of the public hearing have been completed, and the public will be provided an opportunity to comment. No action is anticipated at the conclusion of this public hearing. However, this matter is on the agenda for consideration later in the evening. Are there any members of public who would like to come forward for comment? Okay, seeing none, there's no, the public hearing is now closed. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items limited to five minutes. Seeing none. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, payroll invoices, notification regarding next study session, consideration of a temporary activity permit for temporary signage at 113 Cypress for grand opening of Wild Bill's Tobacco. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for property located at 141 Washington Street. A request has been received from 141 Washington Street LLC to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 141 Washington Street pursuant to Public Act 146 of 2000 to facilitate redevelopment of the property. A public hearing on request was held earlier in this meeting. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district for the property located at 141 Washington Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. At the work session, we had talked about this before, and I guess I just want to clarify the number of years. I believe we had talked about 12 years, and I guess I'm wondering, is that something that the council could decide? 12 is not the right number.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
So the application that was put forth by the developer asked, requested 12. The form that was reviewed by city staff supports that request, and so that is before you as, as the, as the resolution. You can have discussions, but in order to support the project and, and help it get, and close that one point something million dollar gap, we would suggest or recommend 12 years as requested.
Anybody else? Thank you. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of an application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate from 141 Washington LLC for property located at 141 Washington Street. An application has been received from 141 Washington LLC for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property located at 141 Washington Street pursuant to Public Act 146 of 2000. A public hearing on this request was held earlier in this meeting. This item could be considered if council took action to establish the Oprah District in previous agenda item. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution to approve an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate application for 141 Washington LLC for the property located at 141 Washington Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration of approving the Community Development Block Grant, CBGB CHIL Grant authorizing resolution. On September 25th, 2023, the City of Manistee submitted a letter of intent to MISHDA for the Community Development Block Grant, CD BG Housing Improving Local Viability CHIL Program. MISHDA has since determined that the submission has been the threshold criteria to warrant, sorry, warrant and invitation to apply for further consideration for an award of the CD BG CHIL Grant program funding. The application requires a resolution to designate the city manager as the Environmental Review Certifying Officer, the person authorized to certify the application, provide oversight of grant activities, sign the grant agreement and payment request, and execute an additional documents required to carry out the complete, carry out and complete the grant. At this time, council could take action to approve and authorize the resolution to apply for up to $500,000 in the CBGB CHIL funds and designate the city manager, William Gamble, as Environmental Review Certifying Officer, authorizing him to execute application. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into a four-year installment purchase contract with Westshore Bank Truck and Trailer Specialties of Boyne Falls Inc. and D&amp;K Truck Company to finance the previously approved purchase of a plow truck and related equipment. On April 4th, 2023, council approved the purchase of a plow truck and related equipment in the amount of $228,837. When approved, it was anticipated that financing agreements would have, have to be made later due to the long lead time. The truck chassis is now done and has been delivered to the equipment vendor for assembly. The city solidified financing bids for the chassis and equipment and needs to close on financing to pay the vendors. At this time, council should take action to adopt a resolution to enter into a four-year installment purchase contract with Westshore Bank Truck and Trailer Specialties of Boyne Falls Inc. and D&amp;K Truck Company in the amount of $178,000 to finance the purchase of a plow truck and related equipment, and further authorize the chief financial officer to execute any needed documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
Is this the final price now? We're not going to get another billion down the road to pay on any other stuff yet? You got the chassis, all the other equipment that goes with it?
Yeah, so the, the bid was broken into those two components. There was a bid from the equipment vendor and a bid from the chassis vendor. So we're paying the chassis vendor, and then when they are done outfitting the truck, then we'll release the rest of the funds to the equipment.
What's the interest rate on that, Mr. Bradford?
What's that?
What is, what's the interest rate on that loan right now?
It's 5.85%, which has gone up considerably since the last time we had to do that. Is this? It's a more normal interest rate than what we had for the last.
Is this not coming out of the motor pool then?
It is.
But you're going to pay it over installments rather than just pay it out?
Correct. That's how we, we manage the cash flow in the motor pool.
Okay.
Councilman Grabowski, to, to further answer your question, and Ed doesn't even know this because I, I just read it about hour and a half ago, I got an email this afternoon from the truck manufacturer that said that there was an upcharge since they quoted us, but they forgot to send us the email letting us know that. So they'd be happy if we paid the extra, like $3,000, but they would understand if we didn't. So, so we're not obligated to pay that, and the, the dollar amount of the original quote is what's before you.
Yeah, I understand that.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of a purchase of a 2023 Chevy Tahoe from Todd Wenzel Chevrolet. The Manistee City Police Department maintains a fleet of police vehicles to serve city residents. Police vehicles are replaced as they reach the end of their life cycle. The purchase of a new patrol vehicle is in the current budget and warranted at this time. Vehicle pricing has been secured from Todd Wenzel Chevrolet through MI Deal, and three quotes were collected from upfitting companies with Telrad being the lowest bid. At this time, council could take action to authorize the purchase of a 2023 Chevy Tahoe from Todd Wenzel Chevrolet for $41,526 to be outfitted by Telrad for $19,95671, totaling $61,50517. Is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Where does this place you guys at? Do we order this?
So two months ago, council approved the purchase of a vehicle. There are significant supply chain issues, so we called the dealership to take possession of that vehicle. They said, well, we didn't hold it for you. Good luck. And we were told at the time that the nearest vehicle we could get would be July of '25, and it would be somewhere between, excuse me, July of '24, somewhere between $7,000 or $10,000 more, but they didn't know how much it would, would be. So we budget for a vehicle every year, so this is consistent with that. This purchase is $800 more than you previously approved, and we're hoping if you approve it, we call them tomorrow, and they, they still have the vehicle for us. So that's our hope.
Okay. Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, now we will have a report from Ms. Laura Ortiz-Lavelle for the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts.
Evening. All right, let's get through this. I want to go through this really quick, like, seeing as I wasn't here last year, but I can give you the highlights for last year here. Highlights for 2023 are Gala, which was, I believe, the fifth gala that we've had. It was actually the highest-attended gala with 167 attendees. They also, after expenses raised about $20,000, so that was great. Then for our 120th anniversary celebration, which was a joint effort between RRCA and MCP, there were about 100 attendees at that, too, and that was a wonderful show and reception, and it was just a great time to see a lot of the history and all that has gone on before us. There have been seven art exhibits, including a History of the Ramsdale, which actually comes out in November, and so that will be a month-long exhibit there. The tribute concerts this year all did pretty well, with, with the last one being the Tom Petty concert, and that was a sold-out show. This year was a third annual Ramsdale Theater Camp with Karen Curley as the leader, and there were 23 students, and we gave out about $2,700 in, what am I trying to say? Scholarships, thank you. $2,700 in scholarships. And this year, we are going to be hosting, or sorry, '24, we will be hosting the fourth annual Theater Camp. Karen Curley is coming back, but this year it's going to be a little bit different. She's hoping to separate it into, between those two weeks, as a beginners camp and an advanced camp, and maybe bring in some more students. And then the, the advanced camp will also be putting on a performance, a ticketed performance at the end of the show, at the end of their two weeks. Manistee Civic Players are alive and well and doing a great job. They've had two performances there, and their third one is, is, no, it's Nonsense, it's Nutcrackers, in December, excuse me, which will be coming right after Nutcrackers that the Ramsdale is putting on. Go to the next one here.
I have a question, if I can interrupt.
Absolutely.
Um, what is the cost to attend the, the camp for a student?
That is a great question. May I, $400?
$400?
Yes. And of those scholarships that were given last year, most of them were about half the cost they were given from the Marilyn Gayler Foundation, or James Gayler Memorial Scholarship Fund. So Theater Camp, I gave you a little bit of the highlights for that. Also Theater Camp, this is a musical camp. We are hoping to add next year theater classes, which will be improv, readers theater, some behind-the-scenes scenes or stagecraft classes. That, some of them will be free to attend, and some of them, there will be a cost, but not, not like the performance theater here. And eventually, we would like to add those young company classes where year, year-round classes and offering performance for those students, too. But that's a little bit of a long-term goal, but we're hoping to reach that. So last year, there were 10 to 12 live concerts, 20 to 40 screenings. We offer the Met Opera National Theater January Series, and in '24, we are hoping to add the World Affairs Council Great Decisions. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, but they offer, there's eight topics, topics that we're giving, given to the council about world affairs, and the one that we're going to be working with is in Grand Rapids, and they will come up with their own speakers, and we will be broadcasting it live like we do the opera and, and January Series. We're continuing our historic tours. The Conservatory of Dance will be back. They are going to be doing two performances, so they are going to do their fall performance this year, which will be Cinderella, and then they'll be back next year for two performances. Then go to, then there's me. Hello. My name's Laura Ortiz-Lavelle. I actually am not new to the Ramsdale. Most of you know my story, but for those of you who don't, I worked, I came here in 2017 and stayed until 2020 when we closed down for COVID. And I remember my last day at the Ramsdale. I was going in, returning all my items and, and checking out the theater one more time, and saying my goodbyes, and I said, went to the, our little statue of TJ Ramsdale and said, I don't believe our story is done. And who would have known that three years later I would be back, and so I'm very glad to be back. And even though it's an hour and 20-minute drive for me, I do it because I appreciate the Ramsdale, I have a love for the arts, and the, and, and the great history that's there at the Ramsdale, and also a very great love for our community. 2024 calendar, did I skip one? I don't think so. Here, I guess I did. I'm sorry, but the 2024 calendar, we are working right now. The programming committee has been getting together and trying to get our season up and going. We do have the, the basic stuff, like I said, January series, the Great Decisions. We have a few concerts coming in, the smaller concerts. We do have the rentals that are coming in. Also, a big, a big part of our funding is through our rentals, weddings, graduation parties. We have a few of those already. I'm in the process of working with eight different brides, and I'm hoping to bring that back up to that 20 rental level, so that will bring in quite a bit of income for us there. And, and then, like I said, the fourth Theater Camp, and then we are working to get those, those tribute series booked and start looking for our sponsors, and once we do that, we will be announcing it to the public and start selling our tickets. This year, we are celebrating 120 years, which is amazing and so exciting, and in five more years, we are already planning our 125th celebration. So I'm excited because I think about the fact that the Ramsdale has 120 years and that we are the caretakers of not just the facility, but, but the history behind it. And I'm looking forward to the start of the next 120 years and all that can be accomplished there at the Ramsdale. And eventually, hopefully in a couple of years, we will start our capital campaign to, for work on our facility master plan. And that is, I had a chance to go over that real quick, like, and I'm just amazed at what can be done in that facility and how it's going to benefit the community. You know, we are a regional center for the arts, but our base is Manistee and our surrounding areas, but we also have the capacity, excuse me, to reach out even further and bring those folks in and tell them, what a jewel, what a gem, what an amazing thing that we have here in arts. And also, the Visual Arts Committee is meeting, and they are finalizing their exhibits for next year. So I, I know a few, but I'm not going to announce them because they'll be announcing those pretty soon. That is, that is a wonderful program that has been continuing and going strong. And then kind of our fall/winter lineup here, the Sleigh Bell coming up, Met Opera starts this Saturday. We do have a special show, The Haunting of Old Ebenezer coming up, and just quite a few wonderful things that I hope that you will go to our website, and I invite you all to come out and visit us and participate in whatever we have going. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I had a couple of questions.
Oh, sure.
Um, sorry. So one of the things I just made note, and I was going to bring it up at council, so this is great timing, was the columns out front? The other day, when I walked by them, the columns out front seemed to be, like, deteriorating in some places, like, whether, I am not sure if they're made of concrete, but it looks like maybe there's some work that can be done, and I thought at one point council had budgeted some money for that or contributed, so I didn't know where we were at with that.
So we do have money budgeted, and we just met on-site with Spicer's historic architect that they're partnering with. It's actually the same architect that did City Hall. He did a site visit, reviewed it. Spicer needs to do some coring of the pillars to see what materials are. Then he's going to come up with a scope of work, and they're hopefully going to get that bid out early winter for a spring, late, early summer construction.
Okay. One of the things that I had brought up at a previous council meeting before you were here was rental prices, and I mean, it might be something where if a citizen who pays taxes in the City of Manistee could potentially get it at a lesser rate than somebody who was renting it that's not currently paying taxes.
So, great question. So right now, the board is going over all of our rental prices. I know that previously, when I was originally here, I had done a study on all facilities that are similar to us and what they were charging, and we thought that our prices were very close to what they were offering. But as far as a discount for, for community members, that is something that the board is looking into.
Okay. Yep. And then the last question I have is for, actually, Mr. Bradford. Any idea when we are going to get those financials that we asked for in, like, March or April?
Well, the financials are included in the packet.
So we have everything that was asked for at this point?
I don't know everything that was asked for. I think I provided what was needed.
And I can give you what I, I thought I sent it to everyone, but I can, I sent it to, I believe, the mayor, but I can resend what I have.
Okay. Okay, because I'm just saying that helps us with budgeting and figuring out how can we help support, because obviously there's financial support that you would like, but there's also additional ways to support that's not financial, so just figuring that out and how we can bridge that gap. Thank you.
And just to follow up, we, Mayor, Mayor Protem and I met with, with Laura, and we met with the Ramsdale, and they, we discussed, you know, things council brought up, potentially a council member on the board. I think initially, they'd like to provide additional updates to council. Laura mentioned how she provides the board with updates, maybe sending those on to council as well. So I think Mr. Bradford provides the financials, but I think knowing what's behind the programming, the fundraising, and we'll see how, like, that increased information, how that council appreciates that.
Okay, now we have a discussion on the process for vehicle purchasing.
To you, council. Thank you for the conversation. That I had earlier. We are facing significant supply chain issues when it comes to vehicles. We thought that issue would get better the further we get from COVID, but that doesn't seem to be the case. And so all of my colleagues in law enforcement are suffering the same challenges. In 2021, council approved us to purchase a Tahoe. We didn't take possession of that Tahoe for almost a year. The next purchase, we received a Tahoe in two months, and we were ecstatic, thinking we found the other side of this thing. We'll come to find out, they sent us somebody else's vehicle, and we took advantage of it. As we, as I just reported, these issues are getting worse, as we were just told that our next vehicles could be July of '24, and our experience tells us when they say July of '24, you're probably not getting a vehicle in July of '24. So what we found is we're not, we aren't moving at the same pace the market is. So when we call and say, give a vehicle, yes, okay, hold it until I can get it in front of council, they're not holding any vehicles. On top of that, the, yes, ma'am.
they're not holding any vehicles. On top of that, the pro-
Why are we doing that?
That's part of the discussion tonight, potentially proposing some type of resolution.
I thought that's what you said earlier, but I wasn't sure if I caught it.
So, I'm just giving the state, the state of the market right now. When we put the budget together for the motor pool, we estimate the cost of our individual purchases that we need. So, we think we have that cost nailed down as best we can. So, council approves that motor pool budget, and what I'm asking for, our discussion with council is permission, when that budget is approved, that if we find a car, is within the range of that money, we can move on it faster, so I have to bring it in front of council for permission to purchase that vehicle, because history has shown us, we're not going to be able to get the vehicle. And that's what report I'm getting from all of our colleagues in law enforcement, too. So, just a discussion with the city manager.
Yeah, I think we put this on the agenda prior to that vehicle becoming available, so this was kind of a good example of that we need to act quickly. This was one time when they allowed, I think they wanted you to sign something, but then they didn't actually want you to necessarily, but we were able to put it on the agenda. But typically, if you don't commit to buying it right away, they send it out, they offer to another police department. So, just to be able to react quickly when the situation arises again, we could potentially have a resolution or amend the purchasing policy to allow us, if it's within the approved budget amount, within ten percent, with a notice to council, we could give me authorization to execute a purchase. So, it was just a discussion about, we're fortunate this worked out today, but it hasn't been the case in the past, so that was just kind of a discussion. We'd have to provide either a resolution or an amendment to the policy for council approval.
It hasn't worked out today yet, right? You want to know until tomorrow?
We're certainly hoping so. Potentially, potentially.
That's a good point.
Sergeant seems pretty confident, but history has shown us, there's no loyalty.
There's no guarantee, right?
Absolutely.
That's a good point.
Because of the speed of the market.
Do we do that for everybody? Now, I'm confused on how we purchase vehicles. Like, do we do that for everybody?
Typically, it's budgeted, and then people, and then at the time of purchase, we come before council for the final, you know, authorization to purchase.
Yes. Purchases over twenty-five thousand dollars have to come in from the council according to our purchasing policy.
Okay.
And, you know, we try to purchase, just like the, everybody does, we try to purchase through the MyDeal contracts. What we have found in the past two, almost three years, is that the, we cannot just call up and order a truck, even if you approve it. Last year, they had a window, a seven-day window, where they said, "It's coming up in two weeks." You have a window, you have to tell us whether you want the truck or not, but we can't tell you how much it's going to cost. So, I haven't been able to come to council and say, "Hey, can I buy a truck?" And I don't know what it's going to cost, because that's just not our policy. So, and I think with the strikes that are going on, this is going to get worse, and it's going to get extended. We haven't been able to buy a truck in over, over two and a half years, because when, the last time I did get a quote, it was twenty-five percent over what we had budgeted. So, we're just looking for some bit of, some sort of flexibility on how we do these purchases.
I agree.
Don't we have money in the motor pool?
There is money. It's just that authorization to move quickly is really, instead of waiting for a council meeting, or we could have a special meeting, but it just seems like if it's within the budget and council's okay with it, I could have prior authorization to execute the purchase, and then inform council.
I think that's reasonable.
Yes.
So, the next step would be working with the attorney to either do a resolution or amending our council purchasing policy, which is CP thirteen, I believe.
Can we do that quickly, so we're not waiting six months on it?
Yep, we could put that on, yeah, next agenda.
I can send out an email to all the council and make it quicker for you.
You have to vote on it, don't you?
I think you have to vote on it, but, but I appreciate. Again, we could have some parameters, too, within ten percent of the budget amount, so we can have, we can set it up so that, I don't know if council has any input on that, fifteen percent or?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, because every time we wait, it costs us more money, because they don't get what they're, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Campbell.
Just a couple of updates. So, I'm pretty sure everyone's heard about the Gus Macker in Luddington. They did find a couple entities to take on the event, and their city council approved the activity, or the special activity event request. They're going to sign an agreement that allows, they're going to have one year out. There is an exclusion, an on-compete within fifty miles, so we know we can't do it next year. We're still meeting with our committee to discuss 2025, but it does seem like the discussion here prompted some other groups in Luddington to kind of take some interest and take on the event. But just wanted everyone to be aware, still looking at the possibility for 2025, although it seems somewhat slim. Another thing, we're still negotiating with Spicer about an extension, so that'll be on the next agenda. We're planning on that coming in November. And then we may, with the study session, we have a lot of meetings in November, organizational meeting. You know, on your agenda, it says that the study session would be on the twenty-eighth. The organizational meeting is usually shorter, and it's on the fourteenth. We could put some study session items on there, so if council's agreeable to that. So, I'll put some topics in the Friday update for your consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Brett.
I just had a couple of things. The first one was, somebody had sent me a post that was on Facebook in regards to the concession stands. And just thinking ahead for next year, is there a way we can look at how we do that or start that process earlier? Somebody had posted that they had done it for six years, and they would have liked to have been contacted, but they didn't, and I'm not saying that that's true or not true. I'm saying if we could put it out there earlier, or maybe put together a group of people to review that, I'm not sure, like, how that, but it seems like if there's a way to do it better. I don't know, like, I even thought, like, before we found, and I was grateful we were able to find somebody for this season, but before that, I was even like, well, could the school do it, like, through Grad Bash or NHS or something, because they had had some of those materials when they did a school store before?
So, we do have a three-year agreement, but we can always look at doing a, next time it's open, doing a longer time period or?
Yeah.
I think it's a three-year agreement that they signed.
Or if that, if that falls through or something, maybe it's, maybe it's best to look at that process while we know we're not in a crunch, versus then when we're looking for somebody then to say, like, what do we do? I don't know. It just kind of started that, that process for me. I did have a couple of people reach out about sidewalks, and they were concerned that sidewalks in front of their properties were not addressed. I told them to contact the DPW. Is that correct?
So, I think there's a process for it, and Jeff, if you could go over that with council.
So, we've had this discussion many times, but sidewalk repairs by ordinance are the joining property owner's responsibility. What we are doing, and we talked about it, we had a meeting today to go over our transportation improvement program and our capital improvement program, in anticipation of starting the budget process with council. So, we're going to walk you through kind of that whole process and have some visuals for you. But essentially, what we're, what the Public Works is doing with the annual money that's funded is we started on the north side, and we're getting rid of trip hazards. We are now working from River Street west of Maple and heading to the city limits, and then we'll begin on the center section between Maple and thirty-one, and clearing all those out. We're requesting, or what we're going to do is put a map together to show you all of those trip hazards that have been completed in the, I don't know, past five years or so, to show you that there's a tremendous amount citywide, and that we're trying to do this in a, the most efficient and effective way possible. So, unfortunately, that's the message, is that it's kind of a conflict. What we're doing is contrary to the way the ordinance is written, but I'm not sure how else to answer to residents when they ask.
When you say that they've been working on the north side, have you looked at Duffy Street? There's some bad ones there.
Yeah, we-
I just turned in a letter to Bill Gamble about it this year.
Yeah, we completed all of the north side probably three years ago, but it's interesting, because some places that we've looked at, there's, they move. They move when we get, every season when we get frost, and obviously, the roots can change that. So, we've kind of made that sweep. Now, we're trying to make a sweep of the entire town.
Yeah, I think the concerns I'm hearing is, how do they identify which sidewalks? Do you know what I mean? So, that's why I've said to citizens, like, when they've asked me, "Call the DPW," because, you know, like, I brought up the one out by Jefferson on Bryan Land Meeting or whatever, like, maybe it's something you're not aware of, or somebody, whoever's in charge of identifying those, may have just missed that one.
Right.
I don't know how to answer that question on how we're picking and choosing which sidewalk gets replaced versus which ones not, or what criteria has to be met. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
And when I went to Brandon the next morning, after he brought that up at staff meeting, he said they just pulled that out. So, it was just kind of our process. The first thing that we do is we send off, we look at kind of where we stopped last year, and then we've got a company that does the sidewalk saw cutting, right? They bevel the edges. That's about a quarter of the cost of us removing and replacing sidewalk. So, we send them through that zone, and we give them east-west limits, and then they work their, they're working their way north to south. And when they expend the money that's been budgeted, then they stop, they give us a report, send us a bill. Then, what we do is any candidate that's a trip hazard in that zone where they've already worked, then we're going in, marking, and then doing removal and replacement. That saw cutting is effective to about half the width of a slab. So, if you've got a four-inch slab, you can get rid of a two-inch or less trip hazard. Anything more than that, or if it's real obvious that it's caused by roots, then we'll go do the removal and replacement. And our crew will keep going until we've expended the funds that have been budgeted for the year. Then we stop and reset again. I believe the saw cutting is starting again tomorrow, actually.
When are we going to have the presentation of what streets and that you're, you know, other map?
I think we're just talking in December-ish.
Yeah, we're thinking about December, evidently.
I walk a lot of those streets.
Yeah, so, our conversation today was so that it's plenty in front of council ahead of time before we get, you know, into the, deep into the budget cycle.
Well, and since we're talking about streets, I'm-
I just think that the, we're bringing up the sidewalk ordinance-
Yep.
-in a study session from the ordinance committee to discuss all those issues, so.
The streets, I know we grade them, or we get a grading system for which streets are really bad versus which streets are kind of livable for a little bit, if that makes sense. Are we going to get any information in regards to, like, conditions as far as potholes go, and maybe what we can be doing about that, because our streets are getting pretty bad? Like, there's a lot of potholes, and I'm not sure if our current, like, system for patching is helping that, or if there's something else out there that we could be doing that would be like an in-between cost, like, if council was presenting some information where we could say, maybe it's worth spending the extra money to try a different process?
So, interesting you bring this up, but, you know, we follow an asset management program, so every fall, we do a structural rating, and so it's not a drivability, it's a structural rating on each of the street segments throughout the city. And then we've got, you know, data, those databases go back a long ways. We adhere to the asset management principles, which, which we've talked about even today, that we really need to bring in some educational opportunities for council to understand what that means, because it's really, take care of your best roads and first, and then work your way down into fixing the worst roads when you've got the money. If you understand that whole principle, it makes sense, but it's not, it's not intuitive. You have to understand the whole program. With that said, we've been doing that, we've been investing those money, we've been leveraging utility projects, we've been leveraging grants to the best of our ability, we've been leveraging contributions from developments, so we're, we've tried to maximize all of that. I actually, I don't know, a couple of months ago, a month and a half ago, drove around and made a list and went to Spicer and said, "There are just some sections that are nothing but potholes, 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 and when those residents call me, I can't tell them when the solution is in sight." So, we have compiled that list, we've put it into GIS, we have looked at just doing, just a skid overlay on it. So, nothing structural, it's not a repaving or rebuilding of the road, but just trying to make it smooth. We've done it in a couple of places in the past. And so, we've got a spreadsheet, we've got some of those costs, and we're looking to see if we can allocate a dollar amount each year to help address that list. There's probably thirty of those segments, and it's not necessarily a full block, some of them are, but some of them are just small sections. So, I think that would be also good information for us to present to you when, when we talk about the streets and sidewalks all together.
Because like, off the top of my head, I'm thinking, like, there at the corner of Maple and Second, like, by Century Twenty-One.
Yes.
You guys have done work there historically, like, patch jobs, things like that, but nothing seems to last.
Well, what happened, what happened there, and what happens in a lot of places, Robinson is the same thing, Duffy Street, you've got clay, there's a lot of clay in the community, and there's not a lot of good aggregate base. So, what happens over time is, and what I've noticed is it's the dump truck, or the garbage trucks. That's a lot of weight, they go fast, they stop, they go fast, they stop, and it starts to heave the road and push it, and it's actually, like, in front of Century Twenty-One, it brought the clay up through the asphalt. So, we just did a big, we dug it out, and we put a patch in, but all the adjacent sections are, are still just as bad.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kreske.
Yeah, Jeff?
Stay there.
The lady is very happy that you got that, did you do that, that person for it, that mantle that was so full of sand, I wouldn't-
When I talked to M.D., they didn't have any plans, so they asked us if we could address it. I'll have to confirm, but I believe that we did.
She said it got done. She's very happy for that. I'm happy that you fixed that grating over on First Avenue, you brought up another level, so at least we don't have to worry about somebody killing themselves there. When are we going to finish patching those roads now, like, where Aces and Tammer are?
Yep, so, I just made a note of that while we were, while you guys were talking about it. We're getting, putting together that list and finalizing, and I got the utility departments going over our list and making sure they've got everything, and then we're going to put those out for bids, and hoping that we can get those repaired before winter time.
Yeah, because I don't know when snow's going to come this year.
Yeah.
Because leaves are falling very fast.
What's that?
Leaves are coming down very, but he's-
That's surprising to me, but yeah.
That's because she loves.
But, you know, I hope, because a lot of people like when you have that big crop that could happen, get rid of all those leaves, so they'll be happy for that.
Yeah, just, just for your information, we had this discussion again earlier today. I did a interview with the radio station, that'll be aired next week. But what we're planning to do is, is I've got a crew that, we've closed a lot of the parks a week earlier this year, so that, that last week of October, I can free up a crew to be able to pick up leaves as necessary, but we're going to put out some information, and we're going to ask people to try not to put it out in the roadway until after at least Halloween. They're not, not everybody's going to adhere to that, so we're going to have a crew that's going to go around and try to keep that clean and try to keep it safe. Police Department's been working with us, along with the city manager's office, to get the word out on alternate parking, and that it's not just for snow plowing, but it's because when you put the leaves out in the street, not just that, for us to be able to pick them up, but it makes the street narrower, and so it's for safety reasons as well.
Somebody had a write-up about a kid being in the leaf pile, and he's got killed.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Connie?
Going to ask about the leaves.
Okay. Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Backland.
All set.
Ms. Beaton. Fine. Slumber.
I was going to ask about the leaves too, but it sounds like we kind of got to go. I just didn't want to have what happened last year, where it snowed on the leaves, and then we could never get it cleaned up, and, you know, I just-
I can't guarantee you won't snow off.
But I like that you're being prepared for the last week of October versus something else. That sounds good.
Take a motion to adjourn.